We'll call this meeting in order and stand for the pledge, if you please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a pretty good meeting going on today, so... I'll ask everybody to be brief and not repeat themselves too many times, and if we start doing that, we'll speed it up. Uh, the water shut off meeting for renters. Is that... I don't see anybody.
No, no renters. So we put it for this, this meeting and the next meeting, just in case, uh, depending on when the bills went out.
Okay, did you send notices out to all renters?
Yes.
Alright, so the Bowens are up, they've got a water.
Yeah, we've got an $878 water bill for one day of usage of nearly 36,000 gallons.
At 10 Park Avenue, which is the shop, but we do not live there.
Yeah.
And we haven't.
You can see the lead-up.
Yeah.
You can see all the usage.
There's one outdoor faucet.
Do you have another copy?
I think currently we have to run for probably a year, use 36,000 gallons. So a little bit due on our end. We went from a $63 base rate bill for months and months and months. Just trying to get a little clarification on these meter readings. I heard that they're foolproof and that there's no negotiation.
We've had good luck with them.
Yeah, yeah.
They're brand new.
But it also hurts rumors people haven't submitted.
Uh...
But anyways.
None that have...
Does any of this make sense, that we used 36,000 gallons?
Well, it does make sense that you did, but it does...
Word.
Well, the... I guess the trust is that we've, we've had good luck with the meters, so some sort of a spike. It seems like you would have noticed water someplace.
Absolutely, yeah.
Mike, got any insight?
Well, normally if a meter did go, it wouldn't correct itself after a few weeks, I believe the, the numbers are. Because it spikes, goes for a couple of three meetings, which is weekly, and then it comes back down to where it was supposed to be. So, I can't tell you what caused that. Um, it's always been the town policy that if you don't think it's a correct meter, you can have it shipped out and paid to have it tested. If it comes back and it's, um, accurate, then it's your charge. If it is, isn't accurate, then the town picks up.
I think the, yeah, what we do is, we send it out and if it's accurate, then you guys get billed for the test. Is that the way it works?
Yeah. So I've been paying the water bill since 1995, with never being paid. I had swimming pools on Academy Street. You do a meter reading before you fill your pool, so you don't have to pay sewage. That town manager dropped the sewage rate.
Yep.
I'm not sure why. He has the authority just to delegate people's bills. I think if you're willing to drop the sewage rate, you're almost saying the water didn't get used.
Yeah, no, we're saying it didn't go through the sewer, it didn't go through the sewer line, is what we're saying.
It sounds, but can I, before we get to that one, just understand the situation again. So it sounds like, when I look at these meter readings, it looks like it was normal, about normal usage, normal usage. Then something happened with a butt, when I look at...
It's 1.2 gallons.
It, it looked like, whether, and I don't know what it was, but it looked like a lot of water.
Yeah, and that probably should have flooded the...
And then, right, I mean, so then I naturally think a lot of water was coming. There should be some water somewhere, or, or it could have enough time, but it was probably, was it two weeks later, right back to normal again?
No, it was...
The next day.
It was the next day.
The next day, the next day.
It was one day that it said we used 35,750 gallons. In that one day, which was...
Average in-ground swimming pool holds 25,000 gallons, so I'm a 10,000 gallons above on an average in-ground swimming pool, which I don't own.
The building was...
I'm just confused. I mean, 350 bucks, yeah, I mean, it's a lot of money to me.
I, I understand the building was empty at the time, and so...
Yeah, I know why, because we were not even...
Right. Because I'm looking at...
We were not even at Benson that day, and we can prove that.
I'm looking at this with all this two gallons at a time, three gallons at a time, and it sounds like that's, that can't be occupied.
Right, right.
I mean, one person, one person taking a shower a day is going to put out nine, 10 gallons, so...
Right, it's, it's actually, um, my late mom's home that we had purchased on 10 Park Avenue. So it's just, I don't, there's... We're just going over and checking on the building.
And no, is there an outside spigot?
No.
And when you went inside, there's no wa, well, no water?
Oh my God, if 36,000 gallons, you'd get to that house, it would be...
Stuff shouldn't have been flooded, right?
It would never have been flooded.
Yeah.
Uh, Mike, any?
Hey, listen, I pay my bills, and that's, I just feel like this needs to get brought to attention. The fact of the matter is, we didn't use the water.
Because we've owned the building for almost three years now.
And, but, Mike is, have you ever, in your experience running anything where that much water in that short period of time?
No, no, especially with these meters.
So I, I had the water shut off for a little while, um, and we were thinking maybe when I turned it back on, it spiked it, but does that make sense?
I asked Mike that, and he said no. Because when I went to let him in last week.
You wouldn't be able to run 35,000 gallons of water through a three-quarter inch line in 24 hours.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No, that was just physically impossible.
I agree. I mean, I haven't studied water, I know...
I mean, it would be...
I read them weekly, and I went in last week.
Yeah, right.
Pulled all the information out of the meter, which is what you're looking at, and I haven't studied it on a day-to-day. I'm just...
And it's, it's just, it's...
All the way back to 22 of July, we've got reports.
Yeah.
It's funny, because June of, well, it would have been the May through, whatever, I watered, I, I put some grass seed in over there last summer, not this past summer, 22.
So that's why I...
So I wanted to see that usage.
Because usually you're watering, you put new seed down, and you will expect it to go up.
The, the hot water came to downstairs, I don't, it just don't want to see. Well, anyways, our usage on Academy Street for three months of usage is 7,000 gallons. I mean, makes sense.
And that's two of us there.
Two people, 7,000 gallons.
And that's two of us in the home, with our dogs.
Right.
So that's why we're confused, because it's like, even if it was occupied, but it hasn't been occupied since we purchased the place.
Would, would this be worthwhile to, you know, the people who we got the meters from, to make a phone call to say, "We've got this anomaly"?
They're gonna want, they're gonna want to say that.
I have sent the same attachment to Scott Pastero, who's the district rep for Camstro. I haven't gotten a reply back.
Okay.
Last I heard from him, I don't know if it's a promotion or a "I'm sorry" deal, but he has gotten two more states added to his... So he goes from Pennsylvania to Maine now, and I haven't received the email back for him to look at the numbers, but I have, you know, reached out to Camstro.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm just, I'm waiting to hear back, I haven't gotten a reply.
Is that a pad or a cellar?
It's a cellar.
There could be a lot of water in there.
Oh, there would, it seems like there'd be...
Background special, background.
Yeah, oh yeah.
If I, if I thought I was even anywhere around here, I wouldn't...
Yeah, we wouldn't be here.
I'd just give you 350 bucks, and we'd be done with it.
Well, does the town...
I say, I say we pay 66 bucks, and we've been paying for months and months.
Okay, does the town manager have a recommendation?
Uh, town manager recommendation was to waive the sewer fee. And while this does seem extreme, it's, this is an extreme number, I'm not gonna do that. It's a lot of water. Um, but, what we're looking at on the charts is the water ran on the 17th, and it ran for about 11, 11, 12 hours. Because it was, it was, it was on and then it was off, and that's a lot of water, but, it's unusual, but we see this kind of thing pop up occasionally, that, hey, somebody left something running, like a hose is running. It's not a hose, I understand, there's no... But something ran for a long time, and the water spiked, and then it's found. That, that's typically how this works.
What is, what is the flow rate on that?
What I'm, what I'm thinking is...
50 gallons of, yeah.
What I'm thinking is...
If there's any complications in the system, it was just gonna keep running.
What I'm, yeah.
It wasn't gonna stop.
Three-quarter, usually there's three-quarter lines going into a home. And you took a, you take a three-quarter line full bore for 11 or 12 hours, there's no way you're gonna run 35,000 gallons of water through that. No way.
It's physically impossible.
Isn't, that's, that's the problem. I understand the, the saying that, hey, the water could run 12 hours, but I'm saying, that's what I, I didn't know, that's a...
Yeah, because it goes back to normal the very next day.
And the fact of the matter is, no water ran for 12 hours, there was nobody there, we were in Benson.
And if that much water ran, and there's no water in the basement, no water, and...
It's gotta be a glitch, it's gotta have to be a glitch.
Then I think, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I, our policy is that you, you guys have to request it, but I think this is one... Tell me I'm wrong, I know it's against the policy, but I think we need to check this, check this and eat the cost.
Well, I'll, I'll give you an example of the reason I just went to my phone to look this up. So I wanted to find out what the flow rate is on a garden hose for a spigot. It's between nine and 17 gallons per minute, and the average is about 12 or 13. Um, if that was the case, and a spigot was left open, and that's accurate, you're talking about, you're talking about 3,000 minutes, which is about 50 hours. So, um, that's, I, I don't think that that, that would have been it, you know, I just, I can't imagine that this act, you know... Unless, you know, unless there was a flood, or there was water in the street, or something like that happened, I can't imagine this.
The basement's full of furniture.
You know, and if it's...
You notice that much water on the floor?
Yeah, and if, you know...
I, I think, I don't know what you guys think, but I, I, this is one of those ones...
And it's not like you need to, you know, make it, we go in, you know, we flush the toilet, we check the faucets, you know, we maintain the whole thing. But, there was no water in anywhere.
Has, has there been any other glitches like this since, since June? Have you noticed any, no, actually, I'm looking at it right now, it's, it's up until...
No.
No, so it's the...
I mean, they...
Well, there were...
Last December, Brenda was working in there quite a bit before Christmas, and you could see there was a...
Yeah, because that's where I was cleaning my furniture.
It's at a point, something, it was a one point.
Yeah, because the only thing I noticed out of, out of the ordinary is that one week you had 23.43 gallons, but that's a heck of a lot. If you look at, it's on 9/11.
That's the day of cleaning.
The day of cleaning?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, um, but, but just, when, when you get one of these, I always go back and say, "What are the rules? Follow the rules." So there's a, there's a water ordinance, and by, the way the ordinance is read, when I read them, says, "Here are the rules," and there's a sentence at the end of each of them for water and sewer that says, "Unless the board decides to make an exception and do something different." That, but, just bear with me. So when I, when I look at this, I don't want to sound like I'm throwing Joe under the bus, I'm not. When he was talking about mitigating the sewer, he was looking at the sewer ordinance that said, "Okay, if you're not sure the water came through and went out through the sewer system, that it might have went outside and evaporated, you can abate the sewer," and I think that was... Probably you were trying to get, tried, trying to do something.
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly.
I'm, I'm, and I'm okay with that line of thinking, even though I'm going, come back a little bit further after hearing that we're not sure how this happened. It was a single event that happened in June, never happened before that, hasn't happened since. It does say in the sewer policy that you can, you can waive, uh... Water leak reductions will be approved only once to any customer. That's what I'm reading on page 25 with the sewer ordinance. So it means that sometimes when you're looking at waiving sewer, you might look into it and say, "Don't know what happened." Can't put, can't put my finger on it, it looks like it's not possible. Between the two ordinances, it, it allows us to do one time thing, that's a lot of, we, we can do that, it's a lot of water. I understand if we're comfortable that the meter was working great, something happened, and the meter's been working good since. Are we comfortable not?
Yeah, I mean, 900 meters, this is the first time.
This is the first time I've heard of all the time of testing meters.
And they did it five years, no, for just about five years?
Um...
That one hasn't. I'm just... Hasn't, but I'm just saying, you spared it this five years ago.
Right, and that's why I asked that, you know, because when we purchased the estate, you know, I, I didn't even realize it was...
Well, I'm, I'm curious.
It's physically impossible to put that much water through that.
I'm curious, Joe, because it's, because as Glenn has indicated, we have the discretion to waive both the water and the sewer fee. I'm just curious as to what would be the basis for, you know, forgiving the sewer bill but doing nothing with the water?
So typically with things like this, and this is, again, this is a lot of water, if there's no way to, not necessarily prove, but so much water went through the meter, but then we couldn't tell where it went, maybe it didn't go in the sewer. So that's, that's typically how it works. Because that much water, if it went into the building, you would see it.
I'm getting back to your, now you can back your...
I think it's worth us getting that meter tested, and just one time, eat the cost. This doesn't really look, it doesn't look possible, so there, there's something happening with it. Is, the next question is, will a testing show, uh, some sort of discrepancy, or will, you know?
I don't know.
Yeah, because...
I don't know the answer to that.
Because if they just took and hooked it up, it's working fine now.
Yeah.
I wouldn't expect it to do anything other than show it's working fine, uh, when it goes back, so I'm not looking to add the, the additional cost to it.
With me going in there last week.
Right.
And taking all the information, all of it, I don't know if they have a way to go back in and still get information out of it, or if what you have is all that you're gonna get. I don't have an answer to that.
How about, how about this, let's see if we can get some of those answers, and see, before we yank it. In the meantime, put this on, put their bill on hold. This is my solution, and you can tell me if it's wrong.
It's the other thing, too, you know? You'll get your name in the little nice book at the end of the year when you get these. Who wants to see your name in there?
That's how I used to pay my...
Before...
We received it yesterday.
We set over.
Hang, hang in there, what I'm saying, that, that's what I'm saying, is that we put this on hold until we get some answers about what we, what we'll see from the test.
Well...
And then, and then if it's not, then we can do some abate, abatement, and...
Well, let me ask you this, what, what, you mean, what do you expect that we're gonna find? Because it seems like everything was fine, there was one glitch, and then for the next...
Because I'm not an expert.
Right, I understand that, but for the next three months, nothing happened out of the ordinary, so...
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm...
Pretty good chance.
And if, what if we, I mean, what if we send the meter out for testing, and it comes back, and we don't, they don't see a flaw in it, what do you, is that, at that point?
No, what I'm saying is, is, is to get some, get some answers from the experts, that if, if it's worth testing. And if it's not, then we come back here and make, make our decision. I mean, we, we've kind of proved that you can't put that much water through it in one day.
Sure, sure.
But let's see if there's some sort of glitch. First and foremost, if there, if there is a possibility, we want to get that meter out of there anyways. But if there's not, if they're not gonna be able to find anything, then it comes back here, and we make the decision.
Well, I guess...
It'll all be in the book.
My, my question is, is if we, if we, if we all agree, if we all agree here that this number is, that this amount of water would be, it's impossible for this amount of water to go through that meter, and, you know, then why can't we just simply make an adjustment right now, and then go ahead, and if the meter is bad, or not bad, we can pull the meter or do whatever, but I don't think we should be holding a, a bill like this, when it's clear that, that this couldn't have happened. If it was, if it was a matter of a couple of thousand gallons, I could see that, but this is, this is impossible.
And are you proposing?
And are you proposing, what, when I look at the ordinance, when it talks in the sewer ordinance about, when you have something like this comes up, and you can't quite, you know something went wrong, you can't quite put your finger on it, you take four quarters, average quarters, do an average, and that's what you're watering. It's, it isn't no water bill, but you get a water bill for, what, what you're saying is you want a fair water bill.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what, I mean, we don't want to come here and say we're not gonna pay anything. We're willing to pay the 63.50 that we've been paying, because it hasn't been...
I'm gonna make a motion at this point, that the bill that, based upon our authority, under the, the rules that you decided, Glenn, that we reduce the wa, both the water and sewer bills to what their four-quarter average would be.
I second that, because this is impossible for this to happen. It's gotta be a glitch in the system.
And leave it up, and the only thing for, for a little discussion there is, leave it up to whether, if Mike feels they put another meter in after he hears back.
Just to keep everybody happy, I, even tomorrow or whatever, if to your convenience, we can change that meter out, whether we decide to test it or not.
And, and I would, I would...
Later discussion, possibly.
I'd, I'd be concerned about that.
That's entirely up to you guys.
Right, I'd be concerned about that meter going back out someplace else again, and we don't want that to happen, that, that...
Can I ask, can I ask a question? That, that is, this is all electronic, you drive up the street, it's like, is there, would there be an interfer, interference somewhere that would throw that off for a few minutes?
That's what I was...
Oh, absolutely.
That's exactly what I was concerned about.
There are houses that you have to sit in front of the house for minutes before the... It has three cycles in it, and sometimes you have to sit there, and every cycle is, I believe, 92 or 96 seconds. And depending on what cycle it's on, that it picks up.
But you know how these computer gurus are, they could be upstairs in their bedroom, sending out some signal somewhere to mess, mess that up.
Well, it's not different than radio, I mean, you drive down the road, and it feeds in and out. Or the other thing that first popped into my mind was, these are electronic. If something short-circuited or something that was hooked to a pipe or plumbing somewhere, and it's in charge through that, you know, adapt it for however many hours.
Well, we got a motion on the floor.
Well, before, I, I'm just wondering what the power source is for that, is it a battery?
Battery.
It's a battery, okay. Alright, okay.
Are you okay, you know what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
That's good.
We'll do that.
Thank you for coming.
Sorry to waste the time on that, but...
No, you're, you're...
Nope, 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 that wasn't a waste of time.
Because I really don't have any...
This thing's about a thousand dollars, but...
Right, because now I'm, I'm wondering, it's like what my water bill's gonna be next time, next time, so...
Well, we, and the thing is, we have four places, you know, two on Academy Street, and two on Park Avenue, and all four places don't even equal up to almost 900 gallons.
Alright.
That's what I was... Yeah, you guys decide to...
Yeah, I mean, you can give me a call and set it to fine, or I can just do it, whatever's good, you do this.
And I'm home too.
Thank you. Nine minutes. I'll see you then.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Good seeing you.
Yes, good seeing you, neighbor.
Neighbors. Alright, your timing is impeccable.
It is, Tracy.
Apologize for the coughing. I didn't have a chance to, um, run in all that stuff up to you again. So, just explain, we are part, what the state has done is, each region has formed what they call a CUD. It's kind of like what they started to do in, with initial power companies, so it's very similar to what they did with the electric companies. And what we're doing is, currently each district is building infrastructure, right, and to expand broadband. That does not limit each district to just one company or one kind of broadband. What it's doing is, we are contracting with a provider to be able to put in that infrastructure. And you, some of, and they need somebody to do it under in order to access some of the federal and state funds. Different districts are doing different things. There is a section at the Northeast Kingdom that, um, CUD has nobody who wants to have contracted, there are no infrastructure. So what they've done is access those funds to form their own. But that is very, very expensive. So what they've had to do is buy their own wire, buy their own poles, everything. So they're literally from the ground up building infrastructure that, where it didn't even exist, because of that. What the, we've done, which is the Otter Creek Communications, is we, um, sent out bids to all of the providers in the area, and they contrasted, then they connected with us on what exactly they were willing to provide the price. You know, kind of like what you do any service with the town. And then what we did is, they went through every bid, and, um, have the best bid that provides the most amount of service within our area was with Consolidated Communication. So, that, and they've been able to do it so far without any money from the towns, which has really, really been a good thing. Because there was a time when they were talking about, um, using some of the federal funds that you guys had already received to add to the pool as well. But because some COVID money, some national funding, and some state funding, what they've able to do is, um, access that to be able to provide the, the opportunity and to subsidize the infrastructure. That does not mean that all of the money used to expand broadband is from that. There's a certain amount of money that each contractor had to be able to provide, and with their promises, so that they have a buy-in as well. It, it's varying from county to county. I think, um, the one that's in the, um, north-southwest corner, Bennington in that area, are all doing, um, they're doing Consolidated as well. I think most of it has been consolidated, because they have the most, and most extensive service. Comcast did not get the bid. We also looked for, um, people, buy-in from community on what they felt was providing the most services as well. So, um, it took, it's been a long time, it's been like, um, I'd say at least three years since they started this, and we're just getting to this point already. So what they're just looking from you guys is just confirmation of what they're doing, um, moving forward. And kind of an explanation of what, where they've gone so far, and what they're doing. So what they have is, we have three central office staff that are basically managing the CUD, and then we have a committee of different people from the county, each town has one to two representatives. And then we have, um, representatives from each CUD that's on the state board. And the state board is the ones that oversee the connection of the structure, and how it's going within each community. I personally, I know I'm on the record, think that they could have done it in a little better way, rather than piecemealing it. I think that there is some issues that are gonna happen down the road, where we're trying to draw the CDs in together. But I think what they were trying to do is give a lot of local control over what happens in everybody's communities, rather than do a statewide mandate to do this. And also the needs of the different communities made it a challenge as well. I think Chittenden County had a lot of infrastructure already in place, theirs wasn't as complex. Ours was kind of in level with a lot of towns within the southern region, and you've got places in the Northeast Kingdom that, you know, they don't have anything. And those guys, it was particularly challenging for those guys on what to do, and how are they gonna do it? So it's, it's been, um, really, really slow process, but we're coming to the point where they are contracting with Consolidated to provide the service for this area. That does not mean that you were, everybody has to have Consolidated. You are free to be able to, um, get service wherever you want. Like, if you want Comcast, or you want Verizon, or whatever, other company within the area, you can contract to do that. But what Consolidated is promised to do... But what Consolidated is promised to do is we're going to have a tiered system. You're going to have a baseline fee that provides internet access to every, broadband access to everybody within the community, and they guaranteed a lock in that price so that they can make it affordable for everybody. And like anything else, there's going to be different tiers that you're going to be able to do that.
I, I would guess that Consolidated will eventually run the others out because their service is, I mean, it's probably the fastest service. It's faster, it's faster than I had in Florida, and it's also the cost that there, that Comcast is putting out is not, it's not really competitive at all. It's, it's within a few dollars of what Consolidated is, is charging and with, with inferior service, so.
I have done, like I did telehealth from home during COVID and with, in a specific medical site that I have to use because it's HIPAA compliant, and I was able to use it without any glitches or problem. Others I know had different services, and one was using a service through Comcast, and it was, they had continued problem. I had none using my medical site with Consolidated Communication, so.
Yeah.
But they were the one that had the best price, and they were the one that was willing to work with the CUD on providing services at a level where everybody could have it. They also have a lot of infrastructure already in place here as well. And rather than start from ground one, using an existing provider that's giving quality service seems like a good, you know, bait for our bug.
Oh, yeah.
So what, what exactly do you need from us?
Um, nothing, just kind of an update for that and let me know that you have read through, this is an expenditure of where funds have gone, what they've done and what proposed expenses are going to happen. At this point, I have not heard that they're asking any funding from the towns. So basically just had to present this to you and let you know that this is what the money was spent going forward and you guys that I presented and let you know that it is, and that this is what they presented to, to the state board as a final accounting for the year. It's their annual report with twenty-four budget.
So when I looked at the, the colored graph that said, okay, it looks like Fairhaven is pretty green. Uh, there's some, there's some blue there, do we, how do we stand here for Consolidated being done because in Fairhaven now?
Um, they're working pretty, it's not just Fairhaven, we're doing the whole, but they're doing pretty well. One of the things they asked us to do, which was Joe and I tested, it was crazy. They wanted everybody literally to go door to door in your district and ask people how their broadband was. Now Rutland was like, we can't do that. The two guys from Rutland are like, this is crazy. So what we've managed to pay back onto, the schools had already done it. When they were looking at what areas had broadband to provide services for the community during COVID, they had all that data. So we're able to contact the schools and say, what areas did you find needed service? What areas did you find you had service? Because what was happening is some of the broadband services, the companies were claiming they had a lot more than actually was. So the data that the state had and the data that the communities had was quite different. Because they're saying, of course we covered that area. And we're saying, no, you don't. You know, you can't get anything, you know, you're on River Street, but after you get past the yellow house, there's nothing. So we were able to use that data from the schools and other organizations in the community and figure out what areas it need were. And what they're doing currently, they're doing pretty well. They've, some places up on Balmazine that, um, they've been expanding it and that didn't have it like up near, where is it, right? Um, where people that we know, near Folk Bridge in that area.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're starting to expand services in that area that didn't have it before. So, um, yeah, they're trying, uh, we're trying. And, and I, it's, it's also open for updating. And I was just calling to say, listen, you know, you guys are just saying we're covering. So it's a process. We found that they've been very attentive to what we're doing. Um, we also find out, I just found out today that there is a bid where another company is taking over Consolidated, apparently. It's a, um, I don't have the name of the company right off right now. I just got an email literally on my way here that it's going, Consolidated is a publicly traded company. The company that's taking over is not. It's a, um, so we've gotten reassurance from them apparently that nothing's going to change and they're going to guarantee everything that Consolidated did and agree to go forward. Um, the board, some of them feel that this is much better because they've got a better, more skin in the game. They're looking to do that, but I'll get you guys the name as soon as I get all the information from everybody.
Can I say something? Phidium Internet, they've been around the last few days.
Phidium's Consolidated.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
They're promoting this. They said that they're going to have this up and running within two or three weeks.
Yep.
There's a fellow from Albany going door to door in my area.
My understanding is that right now everybody in Fairhaven can get the service. It's just a question of whether or not they have the connections between the outside poles and the house, and most people don't have that. But when I had it installed, they had to do that and run a new line in, but it was, it was fast.
That's a pretty simple service, and they're pretty responsive.
Yeah.
When we've had issues too. So I, I, we don't get phone service at our house, but we get internet now, so.
Well, do, do they offer that internet phone service? They do?
Yes, yeah, they do. Is we got a, we got one just to help out a landline as well, so you can get a landline through the service as well. But it's mostly what they're doing is they're guaranteeing a certain low price to make it affordable for everybody. And like the electric companies or anybody else, they're going to have to go through the state board in order to ask for increases in those rates. So once they lock those rates in, they can't just willy-nilly raise them. Because it's, what they're basically trying to set up in Vermont is another utility. So what this is going to do is you're going to have the internet, your electric and that kind of thing, and they're going to have to go through the board to be able to continue to be licensed in Vermont and to provide equitable and economic services. So it's, it's, it's going to be regulated fairly well. I think a little bit too many pans in the pie, but it's like, because you have each district that has their own set of how they're doing it and then then overseeing board. And there has been some conflict where the local people say, saying something, and then they bring it to the state board, and the state board says, well, no, we're not going to do that. And I, I think that's been one of the challenges of trying to get anything in, you know. But they really wanted to make sure that at the local level, people had a say.
I was just, I bet that's, that map is COVID time era map.
Yeah.
So that's why you're seeing a lot of, that's my guess, but I don't know, I don't have any idea if that's true or not, but that's probably when they, when that map.
And I wouldn't say, I mean, every day they're outlaying lies, so it's hard to get a continued update, so. Yeah, they, they are, you know.
Any questions? If we don't have to do anything, all the more better.
Just say, okay, we got it, it's okay.
We got it.
We got it. It's okay. Thank you very much.
Take care.
All right, thanks, guys.
See you later.
Bye-bye.
You're welcome to stay.
No, no, it's okay, I'll wait for you at home.
I cook supper.
He cooks, I'm this night, I don't get home until now.
Okay. Thanks. Amendments to the agenda. Moving right along. Approval of the minutes of October third, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve the minutes from October thirtieth.
Second? Second. Jason? Additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Okay, five minutes for public comment.
Rose?
So as I was explaining to these guys, you weren't here yet, Jason. My daughter's a senior this year, and so we're working on project graduation. And one of the things that we were looking to do was to, in a lot of the other towns, they put the banners up with the seniors' pictures, the graduating seniors on them, on the telephone poles. So I came and asked Joe for his advice, and he was extremely helpful. I mean, I just, I asked him, he's like, boom, and he was on the, the email. And later that day, I had answers, and did we get any more answers speaking of that?
Yeah, I just need to read through their agreement and then sign off on it.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's easy.
Okay, and so these guys don't have any, you, you can, you.
Yeah, we can do it.
Okay. Um, so I wanted to let you know that's happening, and I thank you very, very much. I appreciate your, he also, as I was explaining to some of you guys before the meeting, senior class, their fundraiser is to sell Slager Yard signs, and they're twenty dollars apiece. What we're, what I'm working on is downtown and south side. And there are other parents, obviously, that are, are working on it. We're trying to get all the merchants to buy a sign and put it in their window because all of our teams are in the playoffs. Every one of our fall teams is in playoffs, so we're really trying to support it.
I got a lot of brothers out of town. They're going to be buying twenty-dollar. Thanks.
Got it. So I just wanted, we're, we're trying to basically paint the town blue, figuratively speaking, John.
Onward.
And I just wanted to let you guys know what's going on. And if you know of anybody who would like one of the signs, I have them, I work at the Woods Agency right in the corner, and I have them available, so you can just direct them over to me. I'm kind of a central location.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Do we have a, do we have anybody else on for five minutes? What time is it? Oh, he was bigger than seven fifteen. We'll let him, we'll break in if we have to, if somebody else wants to talk. But we were figuring eight fifteen, so we'll go back to him. Anybody else for public? Nope. Okay, department head reports. You're there.
My quick report in Boston. In the last two weeks, we had five or six violations, violation, not really, we lose, police report, DUI, incapacitated person, and a dragon lung, suspended. There were forty-two traffic tickets, fourteen, thirty, and two car crashes. We only did ten sets of fingerprints, but it's kind of in the raw between the start of school and next midterm. Um, I did a brief highlighter of everything that we did for the last two weeks. I'd like to point out that Sheriff McDermott started his sixth year, and part-time officer Craig Walters started his third. The ninth, we did active sugar training, we had two four-hour blocks, one in the afternoon, one in the morning, and we had great participation. We had Rutland Town, Rutland Town Constable, Ferryman Constable, Polk Constable, White House Police Department, Rutland Town Police Department, Rutland County Sheriff's Department. Castleton obviously tied up, they couldn't come over. So we had every agency on both sides aligned, basically working together and training together to handle critical incidents. So we, we did use the school, but it could be, the, the training would be, it could be this building or a house or anything. But it was nice participation that we got all the agencies to come together. Um, and thank the school for allowing us to use the building. Um, I did, I did issue numerous warnings. I found a whole row of cars unregistered in the park, and I put a blast out on Facebook that says we're going to tow these cars.
The ones that are covered?
Almost that whole row.
Yeah.
Was unregistered. I did find, a couple of them have been moved, so you see a couple of different cars in there now, but there's one, two, I think there's three or four there right now that are targeted, but probably going to get towed relatively soon. I should have those on the ninth, so we should be pretty close to a week. So I'll probably have those removed. Also on the ninth, we responded to Uni Street for a gentleman stuck thirty feet in the air by a tree. He cut a tree limb, and when it hit the ground, it bounced back and literally hit him in the pelvic area, pinned him. And he was on aluminum ladder. He was smart enough to tie off the ladder, if not, he would have been, it would have been very difficult. Fortunately, one of the witnesses called Dome's Tree Service, they, they showed up with, I think it's Lakes Region? I think it's Chris, I can't think what the actual name, it's Lakes Tree Service or Lakes Region Tree Service. They were both in the area, they responded to the scene, Castleton, Poltony, and Ferryman Fire showed up. Castleton brought their ladder. Everybody did amazing. They, they were able to secure the limb off him and then get him in the bucket and actually bring him down, so. And he was transported, I don't know what his injuries were, he was, he was roughed up, but that was, it took, it seemed like it took forever, but it was really fast, really coordinated, and the, the tree guys, they got to give them a bunch of credit. And they came in and just said, let's do this, and it was, it was a really amazing feat to watch. Um, and just to have the agencies all respond and work together, it was like a good critical incident management. In the last two weeks, we had a hundred thirty-four calls for service, and we're at thirty-three hundred for the year right now. But I did a breakdown, I think September's, and these are approximate, so what I've run. You guys had any questions or concerns or problems that you heard?
I had a question about the motorcycle that was racing down Washington Street and heading out as to whether, it, it was more of, I guess quite a few people saw it and said, did we ever get that person?
So that was me, and I had complaints, he was passing cars on Fourth Street. I, I located him at McDonald's, I waited, he pulled out. I tried to stop him, he led me around the block. But I had him, like, with, after breaking off, I had him identified within a few minutes. I had helped him in the bank, he had gone through the drive-through, and I had gone into McDonald's. And they said, oh, yeah, you ordered this and this, and yeah, we know who he is. So I suddenly went to his, his, where he's living, they said he's out on his motorcycle. And then I went and spoke to his father, and his father said, what about the car that brake checked him? He goes, he knows you're looking for him, so that's pending an arrest. That was kind of surprising to him, but he's going to be, he'll be a time big dude, and he didn't have a license, so why? I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Mike?
Besides ten thousand gallons a minute going through a meter? I just want to say that our intern has stepped up. Whether you know or may not know, my assistant Jeff's in the hospital. She's finally moved out of ICU, but it's going to be a long road for recovery. So Blake has come on pretty quickly. I've kind of like thrown him in the deep end and see if he can swim or sink. But he's responding very well. We're still getting ready, Monday, RASP Incorporated will be here to start putting in our cabinet for our logic and get all the wires and stuff. That probably should be done, I'm hoping, by the end of the month, if they don't run into any glitches as far as what we've done to this point. The water, excuse me, the pond has done its temperature inversion, so the water quality is actually better. There's not as much turbidity in it now. So, you know, the water quality coming in is good, so the water quality going out is even better. Chemicals are still high. Other than that, it's pretty much same as it obviously is every day. Hopefully the water stays running downhill.
For sure.
You have my notice when it doesn't.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? You're on. You're on.
Just a little bit today. We'll start with DPW. Our Public Works guys, they're, they're prepping hard for winter. Getting the equipment, their equipment maintenance is coming up to snuff with that, getting the plows ready. You'll still see them out on the roads, though, they're, they're cutting back brush still, doing our fall ditching. You'll see them, they pulled the fountain out of the, out of the park, they're winterizing our bathrooms. Barricades downtown were pulled, you know, the, the typical wintertime prep stuff. So they're out there, out there doing that. They got the farms ready for the picnic table in the park, and then down on Adams Street for a little bit of sidewalk, we had to tear up to do a curb stop. So as soon as Carrera comes in, they'll be, they'll be finishing those projects up. I was gonna report on, so I talked to GMP a couple of times, and I was gonna, gonna mention the banners. I did talk to GMP and got the paperwork, so we can hang banners on their, on their light poles. I gotta read through that agreement, though. So more to come on that.
Joe, who's gonna be putting those banners up?
Um, not me. Oh, sorry. I didn't mean-
Rosannas.
We, Project Graduation, we have contacts with the, I think it's Freemasons, they do the flags. They put the flags up. I think it's the Freemasons. Whichever organization it is. Timothy Kendall, his dad, Brad, is one of the people that puts the flags up. So as far as we know, we have contacts with the people that are putting the flags up. What we're planning on doing is, in the spring, putting them up in the spring around the same time, maybe a little earlier than they do the flags. And then, you know, killing two birds with one stone, and then leaving them up through summer, and then taking them down when the new senior class enters. So that, that's my understanding of the, the concept at this point. I should've included that earlier, I'm sorry.
Kendall, we talked to our first guy.
Also for GMP, we talked maybe three or four meetings ago about lighting down in the parking ride. There was some concern about, could we lighten it up, you know, put a little bit more light on that lot? And I talked to GMP, and they said, yeah, they could get one more, one more floodlight down on one of those poles. So they're gonna add an additional floodlight in the, on the parking ride, on the south side of the parking ride, and kind of adjust the existing floodlights to, to give us better coverage down there. So that's in the works. And exciting progress, I reached out to GMP, I don't know if anybody's heard, but GMP is on this kick to, what do they call it, their light, their no outage program, where they wanna take, and they wanna bury all their cables. So I reached out to GMP and told them, hey, we're doing a bunch of paving and work downtown Fairhaven, if you wanna bury some cables, now's the time to do it. So they're gonna look at their schedule and see if they can't bump us to the front, just so that way they don't have to dig up fresh pavement. Because we don't, that's the last thing we wanna do, is tear into fresh pavement. Oh, talking about Scotch Hill, Thursday, we're meeting the state and our paver down up on Scotch Hill, where the water has been sitting in the road, to try to get some ideas of what we can do there. Just kind of as an aside to that, I was talking with Nate about it, and with, you know, it's, and I don't build roads. But I asked, what if we put a culvert in right at the low point? And my thought was, it would drain the, drain the swamp, for lack of a better word to say in it. Yeah, he said, no. He says, that's not how that works. He said, the hill's over here, and the water's gonna come and make it worse, so.
The only thing, the only thing a culvert'll do is let the water come across from the upper side of the road, so it won't trap it. They need a big drive-over culvert there, you know, eventually, that's what's gonna-
That's the reason why, by the way.
Yeah. Put that culvert in, and go over the top.
It's just sunk over the years.
Yeah.
And we had a lot of water this year, too. I mean, it rained, and rained, and rained, so it's not surprising we got some water out there. But, so we're going down on Thursday to meet with the state, and meet with the payers to see what's going on there. If you're in Town Hall, which some of us are, you'll notice that it's warm in here, and it's extra warm in the ladies bathroom.
And men's bathroom.
[laughing] Yeah, so the furnace is in, but something's stuck down on the police department side, so we gotta get that fixed. But the furnaces are in. I think it's November twenty-fifth, I think it's November twenty-fifth, Santa's gonna come to town, come to Fairhaven. I'm not gonna be around, but maybe it's the-
What's that due, you're gonna tell?
I think it's November twenty-fifth.
Santa's coming, did you say?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm not around, but I was hoping somebody from the select board might wanna go visit Santa. So if, if you're around on Saturday, let me know.
Dear Jesus.
Dear honey.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I got for you.
Questions for the town manager? Old business. Sand and gravel bids? Are we going to do the sand and gravel bids?
I hope so. I think Mr. Green was done-
I wanna shed some light on the sand and gravel. We hadn't had a, we did not get a sample from Casola. I stopped over yesterday and personally got one from him. It's right here on the table. It, I showed it to Nate, he's very happy with it, and I'm happy with it. So we got both of them right there. Welcome, take a look at it. I recommend we buy from Casola this year. Gravel, three-quarter gravel, inch and a half gravel, and winter sand. Is that in motion? Yes. Thank you. Any discussion? Anybody wanna squeeze some sand, see if it's-
Which is the one in the McDonald's cup? Which one is that?
That's Carrera's, or Casola's.
Okay.
And the other one is, basically, the, Pike's sand has been here for a few weeks, so it's dried out. Casola's is just out of the wet pile yesterday. That's the difference. No other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we've got it. That's good. Okay. Governor's Highway Safety Grant.
It came early back.
That's good.
I wasn't expecting it. We literally sent it right after we had the last meeting, when I got the temporary approval. I gave Joe a copy, you know, he gave you a copy. Doesn't appear to change from last year. The only thing in there is the educational piece, which I think I talked about last week, I guess was there last week, but I, or last year I wasn't aware of it till the end of the year. That allows us to do some educational programs, and they'll reimburse officers time to go do that stuff, becoming on, with the program. There's a distracted driving piece in there, and it's all the same, same job. If you're doing motor vehicle protection, or you're doing distracted driving, it's the same, same job, different [inaudible]. Go out and say, oh, we're, you know, pass by distracted driver, we're looking for T-belt, you know, I guess, so it's the same, it's just a matter of where we hold the money back from the reverse, you know. Same with DUI, DUI is the same, we do the same job, we're on DUI, but for all just different times of the day.
So looking for a motion? I'll make a motion that we sign the Governor's Highway Safety Grant. People?
I'll second that. Anyone? Does matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that all of us, or just?
Um, no, I can, I can-
You can sign it.
Yeah, yeah.
You can execute it.
Yeah. As long as I have the board's blessing, it's, it's kosher.
Once again, a question, are we doing a truck bid?
That's, yeah, that's a boring question.
Do you have any idea what the market value of the vehicle is, or is there any?
I think the, based on, based on what we've received, the, the top bid seems reasonable. Eleven thousand?
I was surprised by that, actually. But I think mostly the plow. Yeah, I suppose. Oh, there it is. So you wanna do the, wanna sell the truck, folks?
What year is it? It's a-
What year is it?
Ten. Twenty-ten. Let me look before I open my mouth. Yeah, I think it's a ten F-five-fifty.
Ten thousand?
Yeah, eleven thousand.
My ask bid's eleven thousand, but nobody's made a motion yet.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept the, the high bid for the truck, for sake of discussion.
Is there a second? Yeah, I'll second it. Now we can discuss.
Now we can discuss.
You do the blue book?
No, no, I'm looking up like at Carfax here, and-
That would be a good thing to do.
And, let's see, used, and this, we have the plow on that one, right? Okay. A used, do we know what the mileage is, Joe? Approximately?
Sixty thousand, I'm gonna say.
Sixty?
Don't hold me to that.
Okay. I mean, I'm looking at this, and there's a used Ford F-five-fifty here for, with two-hundred thousand miles for thirty-three thousand. A F-five-fifty with a hundred and seven thousand for twenty-three. Obviously, these are gonna be inflated prices, because they're selling them, this is, these, this is their retail. A two-thousand-ten with fifty-five thousand miles is thirty thousand. It, it seems that unless there's some serious damage to that truck, it seems like eleven thousand is, is a little low. But, you know, again, I'm no expert on-
That's got a nine football on it, too.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what the value, but John, would you know what the value is that is?
I don't even get it.
Whatever you can get, basically, okay. Yeah, it just seems that that's a-
It's pretty rough, I mean-
It's not that rough, huh?
No, it isn't. The plow is new on it. Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's, that's a few thousand bucks right there, or more.
Yeah. Or, anyway.
So it's, it's like you're buying the plow and getting the truck, so.
It's not my department, but I would clean that up, and I would put it out for sale. I was too high. Worst case, you come back and bid.
Right.
My, my. Hang it up. For hot market.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this, the, the low bid was two thousand dollars, I mean, that's, that's, you know. I mean, eleven-
Somebody trying to steal it.
Right, exactly.
Eleven is stealing it, too.
Yeah. I, I-
So the, the direction is that we, we think the bids are little, are, are low, more than, and we, we should try, continue to try to sell it.
Advertise it on-
Is there, will we have any opportunity, I don't, I think we've purchased everything we needed, but is there, are there any opportunities to trade it in on something, or?
We, we had the opportunity to trade it in with the tandem, and they would've gave us double that, not, sorry, not on the tandem, on the used, the used pickup we bought, if we had bought a new pickup.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, we had to buy a new truck to get that, that high trade in.
Gotcha.
It was like, what, twenty-six thousand, wasn't it?
Let those twenty change, yeah.
Still, but twenty-plus, so.
You wanna pull your-
Well, no, I wanna hear what, the question.
I just had two questions. If the plow is, is so much newer than the truck, is there any way to save the plow and put it on?
It doesn't fit any of our-
It doesn't fit on-
I asked that question already, it's not compatible with the other ones.
So my other question is, my husband is constantly on that CarGurus. If you're looking to get people in this area to give a decent bid, I don't think you're gonna get very far, because people around here don't have any money. I'm thinking if you were to put it on CarGurus, or what was that other one, Craigslist you were talking about?
Carfax.
Carfax, anything that would get a wider-
Yeah, more, whatever, bid.
So to, to answer your question, I'll withdraw my motion to accept the high bid.
I'll withdraw, I second. So we're gonna try, again, we're gonna try something different.
I would've put it out just a bit. I'd put it out with a minimum.
Put it out for sale. I would have one of the local dealers appraise it. See what they say, maybe it's out for, and they'll put it out for commission.
Well, one of the local dealers did.
Maybe we could look at some of the dealers, I mean, like, well, we could look at some of the dealers, like farther out, like in New York State, or something like that.
There's a couple here that own it pretty good.
Yeah.
So what the board wants, I need more direction. I need more clear direction.
I would-
Do you want me to put it on the internet? Do you want me to take it to a dealership?
You know what I would do? There, there's this Wheeler dealer that I know.
Yeah, I'll deal with him.
He said, he's, he sells and buys police cruisers like they're candy. I'd talk to him. I seen him work before.
But is there a minimum amount that you're looking for, if I hear Joe asking?
I'd like to, I'd like to do some research and get on the-
Yeah.
The book, call the book and then, and you get an idea. Well, you're gonna help, you're gonna help Joe out, then. You're, you guys are gonna- I'll do some research.
The guy threw it to me on a Duramax Chevy two thousand and five, and he got twenty-five thousand for it. And I was like, how is that possible? So just my thought, that's a ten, it's a diesel. You know, like I said, I wasn't thinking maybe taking a dealer, but if you see Will Dodd, it's like, hey, appraise this. Where do you think we would, should be? Send it to Lily, spend the two hundred dollars, and have it cleaned up the right way, and everything done, and then take photos of it.
I mean, if it's got sixty thousand miles, that's low mileage for twenty-ten.
It's not so much low mileage for something that's been plowing, but it's, but it's not bad. You're right.
Does that help, Joe? Additional direction?
Deposit to sewer capital improvement fund. Hello?
Uh, let me find it. So for the, for our capital improvement funds, the board is responsible for those funds, right? The town manager can't just access those. So the seven, seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and sixteen cents represents what the total, what the totaling of the sewer truck was. The insurance company gave us that much money. I'm asking the board to deposit that money back into the capital improvement fund, sewer capital improvement fund.
Entertain that motion. So I guess, I guess I got a quick question. Would that go into the, would that be also be able to buy a sewer truck, if need be, down the road thirty years from now?
That's where we dug it out of the last-
Yeah, okay. Bought the last truck for them.
Okay, then I'm agreeing with that.
Then you just made that motion?
Yes.
Wonderful. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of a town health officer.
All right.
Well, actually, I was going to ask you, Joe, did, was the state notified that Sarah is, Sarah resigned? Was her resignation sent up to the state?
It was, it was sent to the state and to the town clerk.
They must've known something, 'cause they dumped a couple things on me. Somebody must've-
And they're still calling me doctor.
Well, they, the, the two dog bites, I, I called, and nobody answered, and no, and one phone was not accessible, so. That's all, that's, that's as much as I did.
You can knock on the door.
I'm not gonna do that. So we have a temporary interim, or an interim temporary, or?
Mr. Lulick volunteered to put his name forward to be our town health officer while we search.
I'll make a motion that we accept our volunteer, Mr. Lulack, to help us out, and I, as the health officer, unless you're liking the job pretty good, is-
No, I'm, I'm not.
While we're looking for a new full-time town clerk.
Town manager.
Or, or health officer. Health officer.
Town manager, town clerk.
You both got it wrong.
Is that, what kind of-
Hey, we, we covered them all. I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept a temporary health officer offer from John Lulack, until we-
Is this, is this permanent, or is this, is this interim?
This is, this is interim.
Interim. But we still have to go through all the paperwork.
Yeah, that will be on duty a month before November first.
Right. The, the clerk has to send that in.
All right.
Yeah, so we've got the thirty-first. If there's any glitches, you get with the town clerk, if there's any glitches that we need to do differently because of, uh, an interim situation.
We've got the thirty-first, directify that. So we need a second?
If it has to be other than an interim, I can give you, you find it as a full health officer.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back, Mr. Lulack.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Actually, before we leave this subject, I do have another question related, it's a, I guess, a health officer related question. Um, our, uh, assistant health officer, Jeremy, um, I was told that he's in school out of state right now?
Yeah, he's, he's in Pennsylvania, but he's back and forth. So he's in town and off town.
Okay, do you know how often he's in town, just in, you know?
No, over the weekends, long holidays, yeah, he's around. Not, not as much as he was before, for sure.
Well, well, sure. I mean, I, I was just wondering if, if, you know, I mean, if it was met. Means, um, I don't know the law on this and whether or not we can, that, that is acceptable if he's out of town five days a week.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
A lot of ti- a, a lot of times, in my experience, we've never, we haven't had an assistant.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So it's kinda like, uh, it's, we were fat, numb and happy for about three months and that was it.
Okay.
All right, uh, what time is it? Oh, it's all, is, is there a gentleman there? Okay, well, if he pops up, we'll switch out to the, back to five minutes. Um, so first look at the budget is just that. Here it is. Digest it, go through it, and we will start on our way at it at the next meeting, which is generally what we do.
Good.
So everybody gets a feel for it and, uh, dig. And now, if you wanted to just give an overview, I'd more than happy to hear that.
Oh, sure. So at the, one of the meetings, maybe four meetings ago, a month ago, or four meetings ago, uh, the board gave direction to bring this budget at, bring it in at about five percent, uh, increase. I did get it in at four point set, four point seven, five percent increase, so there's a small buffer there. I cut out of this, I wanna say two, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in requests came out. About thirty percent of your, thirty-one percent of your increase is from labor costs. Um, the rest of it, the pluses and minuses, um, account for the rest. A big increase we saw this year was in equipment, which, if I can find my cheat sheet, uh, DPW equipment amounted to an additional eighty thousand dollars in, um, payments into the budget. So that's, that's really what's driving that cost up was labor and, uh, equipment purchases, which is not surprising. The light at the end of the tunnel, though, is that next year, in the, in the coming years, next year and the year after, we're gonna have quite a few payments dropping off. The excavator, the loader, um, town hall is gonna lose a couple of payments because the fuel tank will be paid off, so. Looking to the future, we're, we're, it, it's bright, but this year, um, we added eighty K to it. I did want to, in the, in the packet, you'll find a, a piece of paper that looks like this, got a big box on top and funny box on, uh, bottom. So the thing, this thing we seem to struggle with every year is labor. It looks like, for example, summer work went up, we'll say thirty percent. I'm just using a round number there. And I'll get, why did summer work go up thirty percent in public works? And I'll say it didn't. Well, I say it did, but our labor cost came down somewhere else. So for public works buildings, you may see a forty-one percent reduction. Uh, what we do is we take the average labor costs across all departments and average that out over the years, and that's what gets dropped into these, these budget lines. We've regressed to the mean is what it's called. Um, so when you look through the budget, you'll see summer work is at, I think like a hundred and thirty-two, winter work is at fifty-three and so on. So that'll correlate directly with where your, uh, total labor comes from, and then on the top box, it'll show who's making what and, and what that cost looks like. What makes it a little wonky this year is that we moved some of the administration funds, which was Aaron Kerber, he left. We moved some of those administration funds into a labor line, into the labor lines. So you'll see administration was cut significantly, but labor lines were increased, so summer work, winter work. We took that boss, got rid of him, and added a worker down to the, down to the roads. And I think that's the highlight, really.
And.
For me, anyway.
And am I right? When I look at what's in red, those are areas where they came in asking for more and you cut some. When I see numbers that are black and then some numbers are red?
Yep, red, red is predominantly cuts in, I think, maybe only one or two cases did I make an increase. And anything that's in red, you can, you can assume that it was a reduction. A reduction from what the department asked for.
So this.
Well, I don't remember us asking for anything for a legal cut.
I didn't wanna cut it.
Yeah, I don't think you should.
It's, well, and, and that's where, this is the preliminary look at it, but I just wanted to throw it out. You're, you're done explaining what we're looking at. We've talked in a, in at least a couple of different meetings and heard about the, the staffing, the manpower shortage, the, uh, the help with grants, the, the, uh, recreation, help with the, with the recreation department and everything. And I didn't know if for, did exactly what we asked for, showing us around five percent here, but would it be helpful to?
We don't have a, we don't have.
To, to pull, put something to see what, if we add a position. When do you wanna have that discussion, Bob? Is what I?
Yeah, well, I, I, I think we owe it to the rec committee at the very least. And I, all we, what he, we, what Joe plugged in was just the, um, the regular salaries that we've had going, right? That's the way it looked. There's no rec committee, there's no, there's no divided, um, responsibilities or anything like that. So that, so.
We, we did have a discussion of make two budgets, one with and one without. And it was kinda landed on where that's what the à la carte, which I wanna change that name. Um, that's what the à la carte list is for, is like, this is what it's gonna cost to get that new rec director, and this is what your percent increase is gonna look like with that money involved.
Did you give us that?
No, that's, that's coming, that's coming.
And, and the reason I, the reason I asked the question, cause after, when I looked at this, I says, yep, this is exactly what we asked for. Boy, I really would, what would be helpful when, when we start going through the different groups coming in for me, was if we had that position and just for sake of argument, fifty percent of the time was, was rec director and the other fifty percent of this full-time person was gonna do grant administration, economic development stuff. What line would it look like it would be there so we'd know whom we were looking at it? And what would be the percentage? And I didn't know if what, you've got this first one, whether it would be useful for discussion purposes. Not saying we want it. I, like I, when I, I said, just to give us an idea of what it is, put, call, uh, sixty thousand pay and benefits for that full-time person, just to have a number. And, and said, if you went under economic development and put thirty K in there to cover your grant administration help and your economic development help, and then go to the recreation line in here and put thirty K in there, it'll give us an idea of what we had. Now, we can decide in the end not to go there, but it, it will let you. There was, there was a couple other areas. I didn't know what the rest of you felt like. We, we cut some things back far enough, uh, the reserve, uh, funds that were all zeroed out in the thing that's here. And we can talk about it when we, when we get in there, but, uh, it would be the first time that I can remember of doing a budget that there were no reserves going into anything. And even though I'm the one who's usually saying cut, 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 I'm looking at it saying, no, they, you, you can't, uh, there's, there's things like, uh, uh, streets and sidewalks. I knew, I knew we were gonna have to get smelling salts for you, Bob, uh, when we came here, but, but it's one where. But like, I was looking at the fire vehicles and equipment, they're gonna come in here and when they talk, we talk their budget, and they're gonna say that they're gonna need the new truck, that we only have like three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, that they want, need a six hundred thousand dollar truck. We gotta, if you don't put some money, I, I don't know how you're gonna ever buy it. Streets and sidewalks that we, we talk about a lot, we oughta put some money in there, cause right now it's, there's, there's no money. If we're gonna do some, if we were serious about doing a small piece of sidewalk, we gotta put some, some money in there. Grant match is at zero. Even if we found the best grant in the world for, and, and, and we, we don't have the match money, it's all committed. Uh, so, and there were, there, there were a couple others. I didn't know how the rest of you felt there, if you've looked at it, I, 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 I was going, okay, you gave us what we asked for, kept it at five percent. But, you know, almost some of these, we, when, when do you wanna put the money there?
I, I think we need to probably just wrap our heads around this and, and, and offer, maybe, maybe take some time to put down some written comments and.
Then we'll do it.
And then we'll do it.
And, you know, the, the à la carte would help with that, cause that'll, that'll give, and at least we can, the other thing, I don't see it here, it's usually in here someplace. If you could give us a spreadsheet with what's in all the, uh, reserve accounts.
It's, right.
Because a lot of them are, are pretty, pretty rough.
Right.
David, David Henry are, yes.
Yeah.
And I'm sure I've got four copies of it someplace in my files, but you don't wanna see my files.
So is, is the game plan that at our next meeting?
We'll start.
We'll start with a group coming in and we'll.
So what I've found is, uh, to keep things moving along, um, it used to be we started at A and went to Z. That, that really muddies the water, so what I like to do is bring in each group at a time, so DPW is always the most, um, enjoyable to work with. So they'll come in first.
Water's enjoyable, too, Mike.
But it's merch. It's a new board.
So DPW will, W will come in and we'll, we'll hammer out that entire, that entire section. And then I like to bring in departments that some are larger and then some are smaller, easier to work with, like the streetlights are, you know, easy. But fire department might need more discussion, so I like to put, combine those to kinda keep things moving. And we've had good luck. And, and then as we hit each department, you know, the, the board says, hey, I'd like to add some money to that, or I wanna take some money from that and, and, and go through it like that.
Okay.
So that's gonna start at next.
Next meeting, next meeting's, oh, oh, three.
By the way, Bob, do we need to, to make a motion to change the date of the meeting?
That, we, we should probably talk about that, yeah. And that, I guess that would be a new business thing, too, so, yeah. I'm not sure that we, we need to, do we, do we need to make a motion or just consensus of the board that we, because of the special circumstances of Halloween, well.
Halloween, we've never had a, a skateboard music when you're on Halloween.
I never gave it a thought, but a lot of people park out here. A lot of the, you know, so the kids, so the kids can walk around and take all the stuff from the north end of town, which is nice, cause they never come near us.
Because we actually put out candy, is that it?
No, no, you know what? My wife always buys a bunch of candy, nobody ever comes, and I get to eat it. That's wonderful.
I'm being told that I should buy three of those big bags of candy because they, they, there won't be enough, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the north side gets creamed, absolutely creamed.
And I agree with you, Jason, we should be talking about, what, what would, what would work, uh, for if we didn't meet on the thirty-first, would, is it the?
Monday's the thirtieth.
Is that, well, it's due Monday the thirtieth.
Okay, I would agree.
If, if, if that's okay.
Is, is the conference room open? Should be.
It can.
Okay. I, that would.
That would also work because the school board has canceled the third, October thirtieth meeting.
Ah.
So.
Does a scabbage night?
No, something about, like, the superintendent has to be at a conference or something.
All right, so consensus of the board and if you will warn that appropriately, so everybody will, everybody will know that, will be the thirtieth.
Which will be Monday? Good.
Okay, thank for reminding me for that.
So you're gonna have a meeting on October thirtieth?
Yes, as opposed to the thirty-first.
Is that the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, October is.
Oh, my gosh, Christmas is around the corner.
Christmas is here.
And we're gonna tell Chad, so he can go trick or treating with his children.
Yeah, it's, it's all cause of Chad. Um, is there any, anything else anybody wants to talk about the budget before we go? I, I expect it to be memorized by everybody.
The only thing I gotta say about the budget is, for many, many years now, it's been kept low, low, low. Inflation's been sneaking above it, and finally, it's catching up with us in the last couple of years. So we gotta take that into account.
Right.
Okay. Did you hear that?
It's been a hard couple of years.
We did the right thing during COVID. It's now time to get back to some kinda normalcy. I agree with you that we need to. You may not wanna do it all in one, one big jump.
Need to save money wherever we can. There's no question about that. But we have to.
Yep.
We have to realize that the world has changed.
Well, you're, you're not saving money if you, if you blow it all up and then you have to do it and, because of repairs. Okay, let's move on. We, we're waxing poetic.
You got something you got to?
I, I, yeah, just about, about the budget and the inflation, um, just to chime in about, um, the staff that work for the town of Fairhaven, for the residents of Fairhaven. The staff that, that the town employs and that the residents employ, they take it very seriously that they're working with tax money. And they do everything, absolutely everything they can to save money for the taxpayer. There is absolutely no frivolous spending that's down to where we do, I, I can speak for myself, and I know Mike, Mike does a lot on his own, but down to the point where I will try to fix the toilets myself, if I can. That's, that's how serious we take where this money is coming from, and I, I hope residents understand that. We, we don't ask for frivolous things. So, and, and that is all. Thank you.
I mean, I don't give the big old desk.
No, no, that got delivered to me.
And I already have the big chair to go with it.
Okay, uh, parking lot, we're gonna plow through, anything exciting?
No pun intended.
Well, actually, that, I wish I had thought of that. All right, um, board roundtable. We still don't have anybody that fills in?
No, sir.
Okay.
I, I got the impression he was coming here.
I, I thought he said he wanted to get on, uh, on Zoom, but.
Who's this man?
There's a fellow from FEMA, right?
The small business.
Small business. Oh, small business, okay. And he wanted to come and, and talk about FEMA and other things, I guess, but. Anyways, he, he was gonna come on Five Minutes Public Count at eight fifteen, which we were very early, so I just wanted to make sure we didn't pass him by. Uh, but he may have fallen asleep in his chair. I understand that. Board roundtable.
I have nothing tonight. Nothing to add.
I, I, I have one, believe it or not. Yeah, I, I, someone called with a question around, uh, gunshots they were hearing up at the airport and asked if, 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 uh, like someone was target practicing and I said, okay, I, I, which, which you, what you're concerned, and they said, the concern is with our dog park up there now, uh, is, uh, if we're, if we're shooting, it probably, uh, it was concern. That, that, so I'm just passing it on.
Uh, I will say this publicly because I say it every year this time of year. People cite their rifles in at the, at the airport. Unless they're doing it unsafely, it's okay on my, as far as I'm concerned. People have been doing that since I've been alive, you know, and I, I don't know that it's.
Right, and, and did we, I, I was told that there was this mound of dirt that was up there that people would cite into and we've sensed.
They've used it.
They still use it?
No, no, they, it's gone.
Okay, that's.
So what I've seen and what I've done in the past myself is, is, uh, set up on the other side of the, oh, okay, there you are. How are you doing? Uh, I've set up on the other side of, of the runway and shoot towards that, that ridge that's right there, you know, with, with my target up against that.
So it was, and I'm glad the chief just came back, cause the question that I had someone call me about the gunshots up at the airport, and, and I, I couldn't find where we had anything that said you can't.
No, you can't.
Uh, and, and that's, that's where.
Hopefully. Hopefully.
And I, but, and it was more of just fine, I share your concern. And, and real message is just do it safely.
Yeah, and, and the Kendles complained one time. And what it turned out, it was a bunch of, there was, there was like three or four couples on a Sunday morning. And they were there from like nine o'clock until, until I got up there about 10 or so when they called me. And they were, they looked to be either like military or police or something that didn't have a place to shoot recreationally, but they were, they are all New York State people. And they were good people. They were, they were fine. I, I said, look, I said, you complain for the people down here. You guys aren't from town. Nobody comes up here and does what you're doing, which is just, they had. They were just firing some brass off, man. They were just, they were, they were all shooting pistols. They were all, they had, they were all set up safe. They did everything nice and safe. And they were very polite. And when I asked them not to, you know, to stop and to, and to let us talk about it at the next meeting and everything. They were, they were fine and never came back. But we don't usually get that. We get, we get people who are citing their deer rifle in and, you know, that's. You know, with any luck, five or six shots and you're on your way, but.
You, you sure they weren't coming from Paulette or?
No, they were all, I know, they were all New York State played and they were, you know, they all, they were like, they had military style haircuts. And I just thought they were like, you know, and it was like you said, three or four couples. They were, they, that was their morning, that was their Sunday morning experience, which.
I guess they figured we have, and, and actually we do have fewer gun laws than New York State does, so.
I got the feeling, and I can't prove it, but I got the feeling that they knew somebody from the, from the model airplane people. And they said, well, this is pretty open. Nobody's there on Sundays. And they just came out and tried it. They were just, they were, they were perfectly fine and they moved on as soon as I asked them when I, when I said. So, but in general, it's usually people citing their rifles in. And if you hear a lot of gunshots, maybe I'll go up there and see if there's any parts or just. Anyways. I've, I've got nothing because the only thing I wanted was the covered cars. I know us them for the first time. That's, I mean, it's bad enough we have to provide parking for an apartment house. But we don't have to provide storage. And there's two, there's two motorcycles that are there that are covered.
Where are these cars?
In the parking lot.
In the free parking.
On registered.
Sir, you were here.
Arriving late. I was at the Woodstock, uh, celebratory meeting in Windsor. I drove to my house to get here.
Well, you made it. You made it before we got out of here anyway.
So I need to bring more flyers, but at least I have to hear. I bring more.
Thank you.
So, yeah, um, I came here for multiple reasons. We are still here in the field. We are visiting the government, the senate boards, the town managers, the emergency management directors, chamber of commerce, media, newspapers, radio, TV, everything. We are doing everything. The latest update is that FEMA and SBA, we extended the deadline until October 21 to rea-, to register with FEMA and to apply for physical damages with the SBA. We are visiting too because we are explaining, because the people get discouraged with us. I explained that later. But for example, you can have here people that move from different cities, towns or counties in Vermont, living here. This is related to the past floods. So even though, um, that you all know a lot about government, but if you can learn one thing today, that would be great. That's helpful and valuable for the citizens too, that you can have more knowledge to share with the citizens and help them. So we are SBA. We not only assist businesses, small business administration. We also assist homeowners, renters and nonprofits. We don't provide funds for government, public assistance. We don't provide that. We are not regular SBA. We are SBA, but the division of disaster assistance. So I also brought there flyers for the USDA. You know, you all know that they are an option too. They have a part for farmers. They have a part for rural development. They have funds for, for public assistance too, for business repairs too, for homeowners repairs. FEMA, of, of course, you all know that FEMA, they also provide funds for road bridges, for government. And they provide for homeowners, renters and nonprofits. I always recommend to register first with FEMA for homeowners, renters, nonprofit and businesses. They don't provide funds for businesses, but we need that number registration that, for our application. So that's why they need to register first with FEMA always. As an exception, the businesses can apply directly with the SBA. Right now, we don't have any more S, S, BRCs, Business Recovery Centers, not even one in Vermont. But we have DRCs, Disaster Recovery Centers. Those are from FEMA. Uh, but we were there too. We have CSR, so they can help the people to file the applications, to answer all the questions. For, for example, right now is one is in Lolo, in Windsor County, in Main Street. That's a, a good option. I always recommend, always, the survivors, the people that is affected, that's how we call the people that is affected, uh, to go to the centers. It's better than applying online. Uh, you know, it's not, it's not even easy for us, so we always recommend to go to these places. In the, in those flyers, in, uh, in the flyer of homeowners and renters and businesses, they hold their number. That, that number is very helpful because we have, that's, that's the customer service center number. And the, and, and they answer all the questions. They can give you the status of the applications. They can tell you the latest updates of the centers because they are always constantly changing and moving because depends on the numbers. If not, a, a lot of people visit the centers, they move to other towns or counties. So that's very important to, to know. For example, when we come into play, if FEMA denies you, if FEMA give you funds, but are not enough. For example, uh, the maximum for FEMA right now is like 41,000. But if you receive daddy because you were totally frauded and you, you all know that it's not easy to satisfy citizens, the constituents. Sometimes they say that that's like a drop in a bucket because if you receive that, your losses were a lot. So that's why, um, always it's important to have more options. We are an alternative, an option. Like I always say, we are not the best option, but for some people, we are the only option and best option. For example, if you are denied, if you are denied by FEMA and, and we are an option because most of the time they refer the survivors to SBA. But what happens? The people get discouraged because we are not grants. That money comes from the taxes and our money too, but we are not grants. We are loan to trade loan from the federal government and the people get discouraged and they don't understand that. And that's why we visit too, to explain how the people can use this and don't get discouraged. For, for example, with the benefit of the one-year deferment with 0% interest rates. So for example, the people that apply, uh, that claim the insurance company, they might get the money faster with us instead of waiting more months or a year for that payment or settlement. So that's the priority to reveal. For, sometimes for yesterday, the people need to reveal quicker, faster. So that's one option. And, and again, with the example of when FEMA denies you and refer you to SBA, if you are denied by SBA too. Sometimes SBA might refer you back to FEMA and FEMA might give you all the other disaster assistance, like grants. That, that, that example is for homeowners and renters, not for businesses, for homeowners and renters. In short, at least the people can have hope to receive something. Enough is to apply. You have to accept it. You can ask for less, for more. Is, these are like lenient time laws because you can request forbearances, deferments. It's like with no, with normal financial institution, you all know that you pay or you pay. So it's not, you can say like, well, with these programs like, well, I lost my job or I'm not making profits or I can pay this month. Well, with this, you can do it. For example, the people can also choose between seven and 30 years. The people that choose 30 years and don't take like a lot of thousands, I have seen payments of 20 something dollars a month or less than that. So that's, that's very helpful and the interest rates are fixed. No collateral, up to 25,000, nothing guaranteed, imagine that. So that's why I, I don't lie when the people summarize and say, ah, you are low. Well, the name doesn't make the thing. I always explain that. This is an alternative, an option for the people because why we exist? Because FEMA can give everything. That's why we exist. If you, for example, in Montpelier, the damages, um, they have, uh, some businesses, they have inventory more than 200,000, 300,000 on damages. So imagine if FEMA give like each person 100,000, 200, 300, it's not possible. That's why we have different alternatives. I always tell the people, apply with everything. Apply with Red Cross, apply with Salvation Army. Uh, with all the alternative because you never know from what part you went to get the money faster, quicker. That's why I always recommend to apply with everything. We also have resource partners. We have the SBDC, Small Business Development Center. What is that? That's for the businesses. I know that from all the 227, uh, uh, towns in Vermont, like more, it is more, more homeowners than not a lot of like businesses like in other states, but they, they are, they are still valuable. They are very important. That means that we give them funds and the state gives them funds too, so they work for both, for the federal agency and for the state. And they know about SBA, USBA, uh, they know about FEMA, they are, they have business advisors. They, they have, uh, we have resource partners for, uh, the women, for the veterans. And they can find loans, grants, um, also they, they know about marketing, business plans. So they are a very good resource for the citizens with businesses. They, they are a good alternative too. So we, for, we provide, uh, our programs are for physical damages. That means for infrastructure, rest state, inventory, equipment. And the economic damages, that's for businesses and, and so nonprofits. Of, of, of course, the nonprofits that are registered with the state and with all the requirements, not any nonprofit. So that's for the losses on profits. Everything is related to the past floods. It's not, uh, the incident period is from July 7th to July 21. If you receive damages before that or after that, you can qualify. So, uh, also these programs are not for, for improvements. It always is to return to where you were. For businesses, it's not to buy a machine to have better sales. Or for homeowners, uh, it's not to improve your house or to have a better kitchen. So everything is related to the past floods that, for that presidential declaration. So that's why we are still here. Uh, another example of economic damages are for payroll or dinner expenses for the businesses and some nonprofits. Everything related to the past floods. And we have programs too for property damages like, uh, furniture, clothing and cars. And also, um, we have funds for mitigation to prevent possible future events like, um, churches, roof traps. But we don't have like exactly specifically a loan for mitigation. What that means, that means that if you qualify for a program, for a loan, then you can request additional funds for mitigation. So it's not like obligated or mandatory that they are going to approve you that. That's, you have to request those additional funds to see if you qualify for those additional funds. So that's very, uh, important to know. Uh, and while that, I, I don't want to bother you all. I speak too much. You can stop me at any moment. So, and one last thing to summarize, for example, because we have that one-year deferment with 0% interest rates. The people have that one year to find other kind of resources with nonprofits, with the state. And they, and because they don't have to pay anything for that year, the people can pay that loan. That's why the, the, the issue with this is, the priority with this is take the money and then recover the most quick. You have to recover sometime for yesterday, so you can take that money and reveal, recover. And then you can find other resources in that, within that, within that year to pay for that loan. So, and it is like, and too many benefits to say that these are like only loans, you know? Uh, really, um, something really related to farmers. Farmers, oh, um, I know that in Vermont, a lot of farmers in Vermont, so they always ask, hey, do we qualify? Is everything with, the same with any, uh, people that is applying? Nobody can tell nobody if they are going to qualify or if they don't qualify. It's case by case basis because we have too many middlemen. We have attorneys, we have loan officers, we have customer service representative. So too many people is going to evaluate, analyze each application. So the best way always to know if a farmer is going to qualify is by applying. That's the best advice that we always can give, not only to farmers, to, uh, to all the survivors to apply. And nothing to lose because at the end of the day, if they don't like the interest rate, they don't have to accept it. So, and they can be as low as 2.37%. So it's a lot of benefits. So to summarize, we are an alternative, an, an option for the survivors.
Thank you for your time.
My question?
The key is the October 31st?
That deadline is for the physical damages.
Oh, okay.
And to register with FEMA. And for the economic, the deadline for economic damages with the SBA is for April, for the next year. But the, the physical damages money, that, that one is the, that, that one is approaching. That's why we are still visiting. And we have approved more than 20 millions on this present presidential declaration. That's why we are still here. If the, the people were not taking advantage of this, uh, we would not be here. And one last thing, if I came here also too, so you all can help us to share that information through social media website or email. Or if you all know, uh, at least one person in any, uh, town or county, friend networking that is affected. And that's why we are still visiting to outreach the most people as possible with this information and to help them, uh, with this situation that I know that is not easy. Yep, I, I'm, one last thing, I'm from Puerto Rico and we know a lot about, you know, disaster because we, we have, we have so many hurricanes and that, that's why, that's why they choose us. Because, you know, if my accent is weird, that's why I sound a little bit different, but I'm from Puerto Rico. So, yeah, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
And one last thing, I need to prove that I came here. I need like a picture, but to, to my supervisor, to, to. No, but I need to send that picture live for tonight. I know that those, I know, I know that. That those videos takes time to put, to, to be in the websites. I know that.
Okay.
Ah, where is the, the officer? The, I think he had a call. I have to put password, passwords in everything. Public information officer, but with a password. Something quick. Can you take us a picture? Sorry, I don't bother you. Like if I were, like if I were, if I'm talking.
I can't get your fettes on it.
No, no, but they want, uh, pictures with the logo. They don't, they don't, they want the logo, not their face.
They don't need a face.
Okay, guys, one, two, three. One, two, three. There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, good night.
Thank you. You made it.
You better make sure those pictures are okay. I'm not good at that.
Okay, financial.
Financial, I'd like to make a motion to accept the payroll for $34,767.57.
Wait a minute.
Can you say that again, please?
Sure. Um, make a motion to accept payroll for $34,767.57.
I didn't do a good job, so just bear with us. Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
Maybe we get a second?
Are you okay? All those in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to accept the warrant, general warrants for $150,911.59.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye. By the way, on that one, there's, there was over 15,000 in wastewater payment, 11,000 Blue Cross, 11,000 in Casella. It's a little higher than usual. The checkbook status is $988,960.37.
Thank you. All right, we have an executive session?
Make a motion to go an executive session for personnel under 1 VSA 313A3 and 1 VSA 313A2.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.